Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the council, continue the meeting past nine P M.
Motion to extend our meeting past nine P M. Any second. By Council Holmes, all those in favor, stay by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Right. Powers. Okay, so we are back into open session. Just finished our employee valuation. Is there any other comments? Anything you guys wanted on the record? I, I'll say I really appreciate our first six month pen. You've been very informational, very helpful, very good, easy to work with. I really look forward to many more years between this. What we've done is we've done it in evaluation. There any more questions you had of us?
No.
One thing I did kind of want to look in conjunction with that is the agreement, the city manager agreement. We're kind of asked possibly look at the levels there and see what you guys feel. Have any other documentation to look at, compare, to look at our pay structure there? And I was thinking, yeah, I'm very interested in trying to adjust it a little. Get up with, we've seen a lot more cities. You know, you look at a list of twenty cities and some have the same population, but their budget's way up or they're way out in the middle. No, there's so many different things trying to get that perfect city comp is tough. But you, you look at everything in there and I do think like to entertain raising our low and our high levels if anybody else is interested in that as well.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, can I explain the document that I circulated? So we had asked for a salary comp comparison that was performed by our attorney back in two thousand and twenty-three. And so I reached back out to her after discussion with you, Mayor, to see if we could revive that information. She was able to get me that original table. So I, I did that for two things. I wanted to see the communities that she pulled as a comparison. And I would say there's probably about a fifty percent overlap between the communities that the manager Bergner had identified as well. And then I wanted to see kind of how those salaries trend would trend over time. If you factored in the COLA in two thousand and twenty-four, there was a six point five five percent COLA. And for two thousand and twenty-five, it's anticipated to also be six point five five percent. So that allows you to kind of, you know, factor in those increases over time. And so I, I ran out of time to finish populating the two thousand and twenty-five column. But I did focus on the communities that had overlap between our attorney's list and the city manager's list. Just so we can see kind of what the trajectory of, of those would be. And it is written into the city manager's contract that he would be eligible for a cost of living adjustment at the same level that would be offered to city employees. Just offering another data point here, which I think aligns with the information that the city manager provided as well.
So for the six point five five percent COLA for two thousand and twenty-four, that puts him at one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four and some change. And then in two thousand and twenty-five with another six point five five percent COLA will put him at one hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred and ninety-seven and some change.
So that's just adjusting the COLA to match the rest of the staff? Or is that the?
Uh, so that is the COLA that was determined, I think, for public employees. And if you look at the compensation section four point one of the city manager's contract there, it says the manager shall be entitled to receive a cost of living adjustment to their salary in the same percentage amount and at the same time as may be given to the city's department directors. So I don't think it's unreasonable to factor in the six point five percent annual increase.
You then need to adjust the range or do you just eventually just go above the range?
Well, so the COLA is typically hit in Janu- or July. That's usually when you do all the COLAs for the staff. Today it'd be more looking at the merit side of that. So doing a step adjustment or a number, it doesn't have to be a step adjustment. That's just one methodology. But then there's also a proposal for a market adjustment based on the market as we're doing with the rest of the admin staff as well. Yeah, the COLA usually hits in July. The request I had in there was more around my six months review. And in addition to that, having a market adjustment based off the market out there. Which is something discussed when we first started as well.
So Ben, Ben, maybe, maybe we should step back to second and say, are, are you making a specific request?
Yeah, I, I did, I have a request out here. So the, the document that I provided or I emailed to council to review earlier was just as Counselor Holmes had mentioned. I, I took some cities I had recently posted that were really of note because they were small cities, smaller than us. North Plains, Tillamook and Crestwell all posted new jobs recently. And that was really more to show that our current, our current range is actually within cities half our size. Then to come in and look at the other two sections were areas, cities that were not quite as comparable, but they are the same size of us and then cities that are right around in our area, that are in our region or surrounding Portland in the same fashion that we are, have similar economies, similar cost of living adjustments in there. And then I also included Saint Helens in there because they are a direct competitor with us. One thing to note compared to the salaries today, I have, I have new information from Saint Helens. They are also going through a market rate study right now and anticipating all their positions. I don't know what percentage, but I had indicated in there that my thought was that they'd probably be adjusting his as well, which would be more aligned probably in the, the one nineties. I, I don't know exactly what the market study is going to show, but that would reflect where his other cities, their size are as well. So that, they haven't done a market analysis since two thousand and twenty-one in Saint Helens as well, I was told. So it has been quite a while. So the data here is how it is currently, but they likewise acknowledge that their numbers are pretty far off. Need to have those adjusted. So the, the recommendation I had in there, I mean, you can go anywhere you want. It's just a recommendation based off of, so I recommended a two point five percent step adjustment just based off of normal, a normal step adjustments that we have in our city is about five percent. That's how we do most of our positions. Since it's only been six months, I said half of that for moving along the range. So that's just our current range, you know, up to one sixty-four is what our range is to move along that range for my six months tenure. And then with the market rate adjustment based off the market where the salaries should be, or not should be, where, where the market is competitive for jobs the same size would be anywhere between a ten and a fourteen percent adjustment, which is very similar to what the P D had with their market rate. Theirs was a fourteen percent adjustment that we did through our SPOG contract. And when we did a couple of other salary, we adjusted a few of our employees already that we've been working on that are non-union. It was very similar between ten and fourteen percent. So it's, it seems to be pretty common that that's where the city has, only lying behind the market. And so I gave those ranges based off of a recommendation to be within that percentage for the market adjustment. And then it's based off of obviously where they are, you know, Seaside and Walla. That is a correction on, so Kim's has what Walla's, hers projected their salary. They've already done a market adjustment and it's quite a bit higher than what that projected out, which is, like I say, very common if you look at those who've had those market adjustments done. They're, they're a little bit higher than you'd expect.
So, so I, you would be satisfied with the, the things of point five percent adjustment. Extending the range, so it's like the market, the market, well, sort of market, market demand. And then you're fit into the COLA. That, that would fit your desires at this point.
Well, and the COLA would just go along with the contract. So that just happens in July. So that's not as much as part of my request today. This is just around the performance of my recommendation.
Five percent COLA? That's what's in the contract?
I think, no, 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 no. COLA, I think for us, we're more trending, I'd have to double check, but like three percent is what this year would be.
Ben, what does, what does your current pay, I have it here in the contract, if you, well, you know what your current pay is. What step is that in your range, you know?
It's just, I mean, it's, it's not perfectly in a step. It's one below the top at plus point, plus one percent. So it's six percent below the top. But it didn't quite fit into a step, they didn't hire that way. And usually contract, that's what's hard to see in manager contracts. Not everybody does ranges. It's just really per contract. You pay them what you feel is necessary. There's not usually a range for, those are ranges I did provide are usually because they provide that range when you do a job posting, but they don't necessarily flow with that from then on.
Are we talking at two point five percent, which is one sixty-one?
Well, the two, yeah, the two point five step, we just put up to one seventy-eight something, but it's, the, the bigger question is around the market adjustment.
Is the market adjustment adjusting min and max?
Well, it adjusts the min and max, but it adjusts my salary within that scale as well. So I follow the market adjustment because it would be in the same place in that scale.
So by, by market adjustment, are we talking about the averages of all city managers in Oregon?
Well, what we're looking at when we do a salary study is comparable cities. So not all city managers of all city sizes. So it's usually comparable cities, usually population size, budget size, staff size. I mean, there are different ways. The easiest way to decipher that is around population size because usually they're similar enough. I mean, budgets go up and down depending on big projects. Sometimes there's a variation in some of those. We had mentioned last time, like Fairview doesn't have a police department, even though their population is bigger than us, their staffing is lower than ours and their risk, overall risk is probably less overall that their city manager has to deal with. That they still have risk, I don't want, if they're listening, he doesn't have a hard job too. It's just comparatively, they don't have to deal with.
Thing, they, the, one of the things was looking at bringing it back in. He was going to have to look at bringing the police department back into the, you know, it's one opportunity down the road is, but they also
Have to solve that.
They have to pay for it too, right?
Right.
Budget for the police, even if you're, and they were going to check them with, is this the best route? And.
Quite a few of these communities also oversee fire. Some of them both.
I mean, obviously look at Saint Helens because it's very close to us and very, you know, size, they're five thousand more people. But they don't have a fire department, they don't have a.
Why, this is getting confusing. Why don't we unpack this a little bit? So the market rate adjustment, let's start there. So the market rate adjustment per the attorney was in the documentation that Kim presented is, was in two thousand and twenty-four. I think, Ben, you pointed out.
That's not per the attorney. That was, yeah, just thinking what the market rate adjustments were for public employees.
So we have six point five five percent, correct? So is that what we're looking at for market rate adjustment right now?
No, and that's not to suggest, this is just, if we wanted to look at overall like salary increase trends due to COLA increases, that's what we'd be looking at. Our COLA is not that high. I don't remember it being that high.
Right, that's why I don't want to get stuck in what everybody else has said COLA, it's what are they actually paying? And where, where do they, where does a city manager in a city of the size, what is the market for that?
If we do a ten point five percent increase in the market, what does that make? Please put out the amount.
Ten point five adjustment?
Ten point five?
Market rate, I can, you mean with my salary or the top?
Talking your salary.
That's what we have to look at. Are we, if we look at, we go in, are we moving our low and high up ten and a half percent? That, is that one of the things we're doing? And you also move within that as well? That changes the market.
Right, yeah, so if you took, if you took my salary, one fifty-five to ten point five percent, it'd be one seventy-one, two seventy-five. And then you would do the two point five anyways, in the end it would be around a one seventy-five, five, six.
I mean, all these documents, I mean, you're, you said one five five, but here's, it says our high is one five three. That old?
No, our, our max shows one sixty-four, four fifty-six.
It's from two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah.
Oh, you're looking at Kim's? All right.
I mean, I think, given the information that we received in terms of the, the communities that, you know, our attorneys have historically used as comparison to us and then looking at the information that Ben provided, I would, I would feel comfortable considering a salary increase to get him in line, taking it up to about one seventy.
What percentage is that? I mean, it doesn't really matter.
How can we take him at the max and then in July he'll level with everybody else? We can change the range. This is six months. Here. Then there wouldn't really be a similar market rate adjustment.
I would have to redo, I would have to redo the whole market salary at that time.
We can also do a larger market rate adjustment at the annual.
It's ten percent. Ten percent is one seventy-five hundred.
One fifty-five?
Yes.
Which if you look at these comparable communities, none of them are paying one fifty-five.
Well, Mall is paying, there's one eighty-nine, you've got Seaside at one seventy-three. Sandy would be at one eighty-five, they have a brand new manager. So they're, they've never had any city management in there. So they, they start them off a lot lower in their range, but their top is one eighty-five. My comparable in there would be one seventy-eight. And Saint Helens's comparable would be well above that as well. Would be in the one eighties. So the ones directly around us would be, and then I realized that some of those are bigger. So mid-one eighties would be what they are. I was suggesting less than that because we're not quite ten thousand. Going down to the, the smaller cities, you look at Yumatilla as an example, they're at one, mid-one seventies. They're actually more like a sixty-five hundred person community. You have a gel there. Madras at one eighty-four is their top. But once again, I'd be mid-one seventies if I was in their, their pay scale. Cottage Grove, same thing, one eighty, no, their salary is one eighty-five. I didn't see where the top was, just actually what they're paying their manager right now. So these are current salaries, not just projections. These were brought from the city and that's, that seems to be more in line. Like I said, I wasn't going for the top there. I mean, obviously anybody would love to, to compete with that directly. But I was trying to stay between the smaller and the larger in my recommendation, which was in the end the salary between one seventy-five and one eighty-one. That'd be between a ten and a fourteen percent. Point two five.
Sorry, Ben, I'm getting a little lost with some of the different phases here, if you want to call it that. So what will, what are you expecting July one of twenty-five?
July one of twenty-five would just be the COLA.
And that's traditionally about three percent?
This year it should be, C P I is looking at about three percent. I think that's what our other contracts have, so that'd be pretty consistent for everybody.
So whatever we do today, then we'll have another one July one, basically, of three percent.
Right, but if we waited till after that, then it'd be the same thing. We do the, we remove it, the COLA, and then it'd still be the same. Everything, everything on here would move three percent with the market.
I'm just trying to make sure that we have, we know what's approaching the immediate future radar to here.
Right.
Is that one seventy that you mentioned? Ten percent?
Yeah, ten percent is one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred. And then twelve percent is one seventy-three, six hundred.
So looking at kind of your recommendation, I, I'm just trying to understand, it's my bad. But if you do a two and a half step adjustment, what is that? How are you doing that? Is that just a?
It's just to account for the six months.
That's just, is that just a, like a bonus? Or is that?
Merit, that'd be like the merit increase. Right, that's moving within the current range.
Then you change the range, I don't know.
What if we did, and what's your thoughts on if we did ten percent now? And then that will put you at a hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. And then July one, you have your three percent, which will put you up five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars more for a total of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six fifteen.
There are, is there still the step adjustment included there as well at two and a half percent or?
Well, I'm a little bit confused because on one hand, we're saying that there's no steps. It's just a range for city manager and then we keep referring back to steps.
Right, it, it, so I, I think there's two parts. It's what is the, well, it doesn't have to be two parts, it can just be one area. But there's counting for the six months, moving along a range where, you know, just to account for that merit. You can call it a merit or a step increase or a range. There's different ways that we've gone in our city in general for other positions. That's thought of as a range, you know, moving just as an adjustment. So typically a year would be five percent, two point five. That's where I came with the number, but it's arbitrary, it doesn't have to be there. The market is just setting, so as I move along the range, then this is okay. This is where you are in the range or what we would look at as that range we're willing to pay. Then we move the market adjustment based off of what the market's showing.
Why don't we just focus on the numbers instead of the different phases?
Sure, that, that's.
Right now, um, right now on the table is, for discussion, is one seventy, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. And then July one, you would have your three percent COLA, five thousand, one hundred and fifteen for a total at that point of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. That's what, I think that's what we need to discuss. Everybody agreeance? Is that?
I don't know, can I just throw in just another thing? If we were talking ten, I would say there's going to be a three percent COLA July seven now, percent three later, one sixty-five, and then would you open to like a week extra another for vacation? I don't know if that's, if we're, I don't know if that's something that enticing and additional week.
Right, right now, the biggest thing for me on that contract is getting into place so I can buy a house. So the, the salary does mean a lot more to me right now than a vacation would, which I, that's great for future conversations, but I really want to get in that range where we can.
That's fair, that's good dialogue. We want you to be able to do that too and be happy. So thanks for saying that. What do you think about the numbers that we're talking about?
It, I mean, it's up to the council. It's a little lower than I was thinking, but that's fine. I'm not going to be brokenhearted either way. I mean, this is a discussion with you. My role is just to provide with the market showing.
What is the expectation for the annual review? In a year then?
In a year would not be another market study. It would probably be something along the conversation of something similar to what a normally, you know, a five percent or something like that. Or it could be around on-track stuff, it could be around vacations. I mean, it's really, I, I don't, and that would be a different conversation that time. My biggest goal is I want to make sure that we're within the market so I don't have to worry as much about that one. And then we can solidify other benefits as needed in the future and talk about those. Another thing that, you know, that these numbers don't show on here, and you're talking about the whole benefits package. Other cities, you know, they'll have other things in there like a car allow, a vehicle allowance. It's usually about five or six hundred dollars a month. Or some cities on the coast will do a, call it a housing allowance. Well, you know, those are about like a thousand dollars a month to help people get a house. Not all of them do that. These are just things that are in other benefits packages I've seen. Often, often there's additional like percentages to deferred comp. Those all are equivalent to like a salary thing that are just spoken of differently. And that, that's not reflected in these numbers. And all, all those things that they don't have in my conscious, I'm not asking for those right now or maybe at all. I'm just saying those are things that are identified in other whole complete compensation packages. But like you said, my, my main goal is just to get in a place where I can get the market the way it is to get to a good house. Because I do want to be here a long time.
I don't want to get the sidetracked with this question, but I, I think it's important asked. Do our department head salaries like it's behind, market is yours, they can expect a ten percent?
I, I am anticipating, not everyone, some of them, depending on how they did it before, it may be less. And we're going to look at that. But just looking at the market in general, like I said, we already did some of our non-department heads. And they, it was a, you know, between, I don't know the exact percentage, between ten and twelve percent for those ones as well. So it is pretty common across the board that they're looking for these. And P D was a fourteen percent. So those, those are the recent ones we've done salary studies for and it's pretty consistent. And even those, you could say we're still a little bit behind the market, but we're doing the, the best we could or whatever we offered on that. So it's good to know, at least. Right.
Let's come back to our figure. So, so is everybody on board with a, with a hundred and seventy-five and change? And then the COLA adjustment on July first, is everybody on board with that?
They had mentioned one seventy, I would be, I mean, that would be my recommendation or had it there is one seventy-five and then a COLA.
Yeah, I'm more, I am more aligned to that. I'm looking at like Seaside, I mean, the salary is one seventy-three. I mean, I'd like to see at least close, at least that.
How about Saint Helens? Saint, what's Saint?
Helens is, she doesn't say what, Max is one seventy-seven, but it doesn't say what they're at.
Right, and he's been there a long time. I would assume he's at the top. And that's their current without the market state that they're currently doing. So that's going to be adjusted within the next six months when they're.
Seaside max is one eighty-three, salary's one seventy-three, and he's been there a long time and.
Oh, no, Spencer's been there one year.
Oh, oh, I keep thinking mayor.
Yeah, and he didn't have a lot of.
Right.
Yeah, Spencer's a great guy. He came from Saratoga Springs, I think, but it's his first city manager gig in there.
Remembering what our consultant said too, we were kind of low and we're going to limit ourselves to, you know, we got good candidates. But even then, we had raised it quite a bit. So I think we've always maybe on the low side when you look at a market analysis.
Where are you going with this? Are you saying you want to do one seventy-three, six hundred and twelve percent? Sorry.
No, I mean, I, I, if you guys are looking at a one seventy-five, I'm looking at maybe one seventy-three point five, something like add that two and a half percent. Yeah, leave your ten percent, but then the two and a half step. I don't understand how that works, but thinking just a little bit higher.
What I thought I was hearing was the one seventy-three, five hundred, and then he would get the three percent COLA July one on top of that. Is that what?
That's kind of where I'm thinking because you guys, he had mentioned a two and a half percent step now.
Like a merit.
Like a merit. And if you're not doing that, then I would say instead of one seventy-five, I was thinking one seventy-five. That's four, one seventy-five, two and a half percent.
Seaside, I mean, what is their staffing level? They've got the convention center, they've got all of the tourist economy. But yeah, there's a, there just seems to be a, while their
A lot more touristy.
Time occupancy might be similar. I feel like it's just a good direct comparison.
Well, at the same time, they're just also more constrained because of that. So Warrington was one of the ones you mentioned earlier. I actually interviewed with them three years ago, one of the, so I had a really good study of what they went through. Some of the issues that the coastal cities run who have those, when you have a fire department or a library underneath your general government, that's part of your general fund. So imagine if we took a fire department and our library and put it under a general fund. Our general fund would be really constrained. So it's actually harder, it was a Warrington actually had a really hard time when we were interviewing. They, they knew that they were below market because they're like, our budget is so, they had to go out for the those five-year taxings just to fund their library, the local option levies quite often. So it was very variable. They, they had so many budget issues, they, they were forced to go low and they knew that. It was hard for them to attract talent because of those extra things. Seaside, I haven't looked at theirs in depth. I, I would assume if they have the fire district under them. Because one thing that we have, our fire district is different. They're a completely different district that gets its own tax rate. So it's actually funded in addition to normal taxes, which is nice, so they can operate at a better level than maybe a city can do.
What about Staton? How different are they?
Staton's on here, eight thousand. They're, I would just say their cost of living is not quite as, I mean, it shows their top at one seventy. Their economy's, cost of living is not quite as high outside of Salem as it is in our direct competitors. I, I do have them on there.
As far as how they run the city, you know, what departments are under them?
Similar sized staff budget.
Yeah, that's also the projection and it sounds like the COLA is a little bit lower. But I would say in here, Staton, he's got a, his max one sixty-nine.
Right, and like I said, it is cheaper up there.
And I, I don't think I'm going to compete with Staton for a job necessarily. I mean, it's where you lose people to. I'm not, I would think many are going to leave to go to State from here or go to here from State. Looking at, you know, you're losing them to bigger. Um, looking at, you know, you're losing them to bigger cities, uh, better opportunities for. Live. I mean, I'm, if you look at his recommendation, two and a half and then go to the very, you know, go to ten percent instead of two and a, and a quarter. It is a ten percent market adjustment with a two and a half step adjustment.
But let, let's.
One seventy-five.
Let's be direct here. So, so Ben, uh, what's the lowest number you could live with tonight? Plus the cola, July, July first.
Am I getting any number I put? I might raise this up. No, I, I was, I was hoping one seventy-five would, um, like you say, I put that on the bottom. That was where I was originally going, but then I put a range in case I was feeling generous. But, um, just looking at where, I, I still think that's below where the market's at, but I think it's fair, is kind of what I was looking at. I'm not gonna leave if you don't do that. That's just the number that I was looking at. That's, this isn't a threat. There's, this is a conversation by all means. You asked the question. That, that was where I was looking at, but.
That's a twenty thousand dollar.
Best agreement is one where both parties leave disappointed. So I think seventy-three, six hundred plus your three percent July one. I'll throw that out there.
Uh, yeah, I like that.
I, I gotta sum up on that.
Bless you.
What was it? One seventy-three, five hundred? You say six hundred?
Six. It's a, it's a twelve percent from your one fifty-five.
Okay. Where'd the six hundred come from?
So I mean.
I'm weird with round numbers, like.
Twenty-three cents.
One seventy-three, six, plus the coal adjustment.
In July.
The coal that we get in July, yeah.
Oh, does everybody have thumbs up on that?
Yeah.
And are you okay with having that, uh, the market one effective this payroll? You had mentioned, or is it this pay period?
Oh, so now you want back pay?
Back pay. We're in the middle of the pay period. It's just, are we gonna put it right in the middle or is it back?
Didn't we evaluate him on today?
Of accounting.
When is payday for staff? You don't get paid, but when is payday?
It's the twenty-fifth.
Do we have a thumbs up all the way around?
So.
Once a month or twice?
We get paid once a month.
Oh.
Yeah, it'd be effective back to the beginning of the March payroll is what I would say.
Seventh month started.
You're still within the six months, correct?
Right.
Going to.
We're gonna do a motion. Okay, sorry. Yeah.
But is that just, we changing the, the range then to twelve percent?
I, I honestly don't like the whole range thing myself. Not my favorite thing.
Don't worry about that right now.
So can we vote, are we voting to get rid of the range or is that a later time?
No, we're, we're dealing with just the salary.
It's not necessary adjustment.
You can go above the range.
Right. It's just contract negotiation really on the, on city managers.
I have the, okay, so we're looking at a.
I can make the motion if we're ready for that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve a pay, it's called a pay increase.
Mark, you, whatever.
Market adjustment.
Market adjustment, pay increase.
Adjustment, pay increase, um, to a hundred and seventy-three thousand and six hundred dollars. And it will be retroactive to March one, twenty twenty-five or effective March one, twenty twenty-five.
Counselor Miller, can we just adjust the March payroll period? It starts February twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Weird.
Um, I'm gonna start them.
This month.
Or just for counting purposes, it's easier to have, getting the pay.
I understand. So I'm gonna start the motion over to, uh, Mr. Mayor, move the council approve a mi, uh, market rate adjustment of to one seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars for the effective March twenty twenty-five payroll period. And then our city manager will receive a three percent cola effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
I'd counsel President Miller to adjust the market rate adjustment to one seventy-three, six hundred effective with more payroll and so the three percent call effect. More discussion. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh. Eric, thank you.
We do have one, I don't know, we need to go over here just really quick.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, going back to the city manager six-month evaluation check-in, I just want to confirm that, um, all the topics that we went over in executive session, every one of them was a yes for meets or exceeds expectations.
Yes.
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 Hearing, hearing, uh, do you want to do it?
No.
I'm hearing yes from every counselor. Okay. And then I think we need to take a motion.
Um. I'm looking for a motion to accept the review and that Council President Miller will summarize review for manager Ben Burger's file.
I move.
And with authorization from the mayor to sign.
Second.
Second.
Senator Holmes, any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. All right, um, any no more information, um, or comments? Any adjourn?
Alright, appreciate it.